City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded July 17, 2023.
I have seven o'clock. We'll call the regular Common Council Meeting to order. Do you want to do it from there?
I can do it from here.
Roll call, please.
Chris Jensen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keemer.
Here.
Zerazua.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Plissant.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Shuda.
Here.
Lang.
Here.
Fischler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
And everybody who is present, please join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today, I'm going to keep my remarks brief and extend congratulations and thanks to several of our staff members, predominantly in the Parks Department. As you know, we probably just, well, we did, just come off of our normal largest event of the year, Riverfront Rendezvous. It was a smashing success, and that is due 100% to Dan Kramer, our Parks Director, and his team. It's a well-planned event, and all of the congratulations go to them. I want to thank our emergency services for being on standby, not only for the USGA Senior Open, but then following that up with Riverfront Rendezvous. Everything went off without a hitch, and it was a success. So, thank you to Director Kramer, his team, Chief Cuso, Chief Moody for emergency services support on both of those events. Then I want to take a special moment to recognize our city forester, Todd Ernstner. Todd has been with us for a very long time and has single-handedly launched our community into Tree City USA, earning kudos for that every single year. But today, I want to recognize him because someone else did. We all know that Todd is a great forester and a wonderful asset to the team, but I recently received a letter from the Department of Natural Resources Secretary, and we held a Tree Management Institute in the city back in June of this year, and we got this letter that, and I want to quote this because I think it's important, "Todd and his team are an excellent example of innovative, creative, and proactive urban forestry. We are grateful, very grateful, for the time and effort he and his team put into developing and guiding the tour of your parks, street trees, and forestry operations." Most people don't think about this on a regular basis, but there is a fair amount of effort that goes into maintaining all of our city trees. They're available, by the way, on a GIS overlay at StevensPoint.com, so if you have a tree in your front yard, you get to go on there. You can see what the tree is. You can see when it was last maintained. You can see all of the inoculations for the Emerald Ash Borer and all of the maintenance that's been done on those. And then above that, Todd often goes out to private properties to give people advice if they want to plant a tree for shade or for food, and that service is available. So if any citizens are interested in getting expert advice from Todd Ernstner, our city forester, contact the Forestry Department, and he's always willing to step up. So, thank you to Todd Ernstner and his forestry team for making Stevens Point a wonderful Tree City USA. Item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the council on a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to speak on any agenda item that has not signed up?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, and can I get another sheet? Your name, sir?
Dean Mason, M-A-S-O-N, Rosino, R-O-S-E-N-O.
And which item would you like to speak on?
So, the item would be, I know we've been in communication a little bit here in the past two months about the 2733 Clark Street property.
Okay, so you want to talk in the three minutes on a non-agenda item?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
Me, Ms. Katie Copas. I wish to speak on behalf of Agenda Item Number 10. And I may have some parties joining me as well.
Item number 10 is the sign request?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we had the right one.
Yes, sir. And a couple representatives from Ross may be joining as well, hopefully.
All righty.
Do you need their names, or?
We can grab those when we hit that item, if that's all right.
Beautiful. No, that's great. Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else?
I'm signed up, I thought.
Yep, you are signed up. Just asking if anybody wants to speak that hasn't signed up. All right, then we will move on to item number four. Persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. Bob Gifford, we'll have you go first.
Get my timer out here.
That's all right. We've got a timer for you, Bob.
All right. I want to keep track. Okay, Bob Gifford, County Board, District 10, representing Eastside, Wards, and Point. Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for allowing me time to speak. What I want to present now is a quick set of ideas in three minutes that can move our communities along to solving the affordable housing crisis in our region, in our state. There is a call for action from you folks in this. So, I did a search on peer-reviewed literature on the topic. Is there an affordable housing crisis in the USA? Search turned up 17,000 articles since 2019. The problem is well documented. Big fixes and solutions are not. So, the housing system has gone from being provision of a human need to being profit stream for a financial oligarchy. We can cut through all this if we flip the Ronald Reagan script so it sounds like the market isn't the solution to our problem. The market is our problem. We will discover, I hope, that good government is the solution to the problem of adequate affordable housing. So, it should be available to a lot of different groups. Low-income working people, single moms on a low income or escaping abusive situations, elder people living on fixed incomes, disabled people on fixed incomes, homeless people escaping homelessness, and so on. All these groups are in need of housing, and the old model for housing of owner-occupied, single-family homes is no longer available to most. So, the solution will have to come from an extensive build-out, regionally and statewide, of multifamily housing. It must be carried out by local governments, collaboratives of municipalities and counties that must build, own, and manage these units democratically, that is, public housing. So, I'm asking this council to make a demand on the state legislature to pass enabling legislation and make appropriations for this. I suggest peer-to-peer communication, for example, at League of Municipalities. I will do the same in reaching out to the 72-member counties in the Wisconsin Counties Association. So, that's my call to action, and I know this sounds pretty drastic and radical and so forth, but the other option is we're just, things can just go on the way they are going on now. So, think about those two options. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich?
My name is Rich Kleidman. I live at 2101 Minnesota Avenue, and I want to say thank you to Mayor Wiesa and the staff to begin for the outstanding job that was done with the Riverfront Rendezvous. I had an awesome time dancing to Big Bad Voodoo Daddy, so it was great. So, thank you very much, everyone. The topic I'd like to talk to is something called the Green Tier Legacy Communities. The Green Tier Legacy Community Initiative is sponsored by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Membership is voluntary, and Stevens Point has chosen to be a member. The evidence of membership is present on the door to Mayor Wiesa's office. There's a sticker on the glass door between his office and the hallway that says, "We're proud members of that initiative." As you're aware, Mayor Wiesa, I have been making the rounds in the city for eight months, trying to understand how our city is participating in the global fight against climate change. The Green Tier Legacy Community has a deliverable for member cities to measure carbon emissions so that they can be intelligently reduced. Some cities in Wisconsin are acting on that deliverable, and some are not. I'm sad to say that Stevens Point is not one of those cities taking action on that item yet. I know that I'm not allowed to ask for answers to my questions in this forum, but I can talk about the questions I do have. I do ask myself why the executive branch of city government is not following the decision of the legislative branch which elected to join the Green Tier Legacy Communities. I don't know the answer. I also ask myself if I'm not permitted an answer to my question in this forum, is there any place in the city where I am allowed to get an answer to that question? And I don't know. In the absence of an answer to that second question, I need to consider the possibility that there is no place in the civic architecture of this city for a citizen's question to be answered. It occurs to me that with respect to this particular issue, the person who holds the office of Mayor of Stevens Point is answerable to no one. This is not an issue which is specific to Stevens Point. This is an issue which cuts across all of Western civilization. Climate change is a life-or-death issue. Reducing carbon emissions is the path to life and happiness. Refusal to do so is the path to death and despair. One way or another, life is going to find a way. The process of figuring out how to reduce carbon emissions does not have to be a grim task. It's an effort that can be a lot of fun and bind a community together. Mayor Wiesa, I am extending myself to you and offering my support to join in a joyful effort to make the world a better place for our children and grandchildren. I'd like to close with a Greek proverb which provides my life some animation. "Society grows great when old men plant trees in whose shade they will never sit." That proverb speaks to a fidelity to the experience of the unborn and future generations. It's a sensibility I hope we all share. I hope you accept my offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Christina?
Thank you. Today, I stand before you to address an alarming concern plaguing our community: the inflating of home prices done through the city assessment and its detrimental impact on Stevens Point. I'm a homeowner of an old 1940s brick home. Our recent assessment showed that our home increased in value by over $90,000 in the five years since we purchased it. The only improvement being made was a fence to protect my children from the traffic on Main Street. The steep rise in housing costs is not merely a matter of affordability, but a catalyst for wider consequences that affect the very fabric of our community, including an increase in poverty. If you are familiar with the Alice Report, done by The United Way, in 2021, 31% of Portage County residents fell below the Alice levels, with 11% falling below federal poverty lines. After this recent poverty assessment and impending tax increases and likely rent increases, we can only assume that number will grow. A survival housing budget for two adults and two children in Portage County is $700 a month, yet the average cost of rent in Stevens Point is $1,013 as of 2022, and the median household income in Stevens Point is $49,000. Homeownership has long been considered a cornerstone of stability and prosperity for our communities. Individuals like myself and my husband, who have four children, one who is in daycare, have planned to take those costs that we are putting into daycare, which is $10,000 a year, into our home once our son started kindergarten. Now, with the increased assessed home price and soon-to-follow increased taxes, less of those funds are going to be spent on home improvements. And we are both well-employed individuals, and yet we are feeling the increase of inflation and are bracing for these increased taxes within the state. Homes that are owned by family like ours will make tough decisions, and you will see properties start to decline. The average home in Point was built in 1972, so you can imagine the deferred maintenance and things like that. The city is telling me that I can sell my home for a $90,000 net profit, yet my home has been quoted with over $100,000 in needed improvements. The windows are original. If you come by in the spring and the fall, when we're putting the stormers and screens on, you're probably going to hear some choice words. Inevitably, we break one every year. The heating cost's pretty astronomical, and I'm really hoping that pink porcelain bathtubs are going to come back in style soon because both of our bathrooms are original to the home. So, again, we're saying that somebody will purchase this home for $90,000 additional and still have those lingering costs hanging over them. I really ask that you please take a look at the city assessments and housing. Are the values listed in actual representation of the values of the home? I do not believe they are accurate. We've already had ours reduced by 24%. That's a pretty significant margin of error. This took providing documentation from a bank-required assessment that we had done when we refinanced two years ago, as well as an onsite walkthrough of our home and a lot of emails and phone calls, and I'm in a position in my life that I can do that. I think there's a lot of families in Stevens Point who do not have that time or that flexibility to make that happen. We want families to migrate to Stevens Point, not escape, due to high property taxes and inflated housing values. The inaccurate assessed home values are going to drive families out and is going to result in an increase in property declines. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mason?
All right, thank you for having me. So, I just kind of want to bring some of the other city council members up to speed about what we've been doing here. So, basically, I'm trying to sell my home that I purchased in 2020. It was built in 1880, and now the city is telling me that I have to fix an open permit that's been open for the past 15 years. I would first like to start off by saying that these permits were never disclosed to me when I purchased the home, and the city of Stevens Point has known about the sale of this home several times now. I personally pulled my file from the city as of May 26, 2023, and the sheet in my file stated, "No documents present in folder." On June 15, 2023, I was given an electronic file with minimal documentation, and it was located in my neighbor's file in 2725 Clark Street, with several other homes' information in the file as well. I've concluded that the documentation shows that the city assessors' data that these permits were completed. The city plumbing inspector also knew about it and signed off on the work that had been done. I also would like to note that before this permit was pulled, that the city inspector would have had to sign off on the work that was going to be completed, and that paper has now not been showed up or is missing. When this permit was pulled in 2008, it would have needed to have had a variant. This leads -- when this permit was pulled, an approved variant would have been in place or viable option to pull the noted permit back in 2008. This leads to the application of a variance needed in the current situation that has been presented. Concluding these facts, there seems to be very little, if any, physical documentation presented. Very little communication in relation to documentation on this home, and a troubling issue that should have been closed years ago to the original individuals who signed the permit. This is a learning experience for us all on this path to resolution. These old homes in Stevens Point have a history that does not seem to be kept or recorded in a manner of great detail. How could a case be built with very little evidence, missing, misplaced, or gone files? I hope we can all work as a team to find a realistic and logical way to remedy this situation. I greatly appreciate your time and collaboration to find a viable solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let me remove that pin. And back. I believe all of the other items are later in the agenda. Well, unorthodox, but I was going to answer that question, that every other time, short of that three minutes, you can call your alderperson, you can call my office, you can call any director to get any answer to any question that you have. The three minutes on the non-agenda item is something just to speak. There's no interaction there, but that's really the only time that we don't have an interaction. We want to make sure people have the ability to speak whatever they want to say for those three minutes. But any other time, if anybody ever has questions, contact your alderperson, contact my office, contact the appropriate director, and you will get your question answered. The other thing that is rather unorthodox, and I want to make sure that the council understands the issue that Mason has and that's been going on for some time, I'm going to ask Director Kornowski to briefly explain the situation over there on Clark Street.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the situation at 2733 Clark Street was, when the home was built, the original bathroom was actually in the basement of the home. In 2008, there was a plumbing permit pulled, and as far as we know, the plumbing permit just says to relocate some piping, and if you go into the basement there, you can see there's newer piping, new PVC piping. However, the former exterior porch was converted into a bathroom. The problem that the building inspection staff is having is that we require seven-foot minimum ceiling height. The bathroom that was, I'm sorry, the front porch that was converted into a bathroom has a much lower ceiling height. I know I've been out there and I've measured it with our inspection staff. I don't want to guess what it is, but if you use the toilet, you're going to hit your head, essentially, and I'm not a very tall person. And so, what we're running into is there were permits pulled in 2008. They were never closed by the inspection staff at that time. About two years ago, we started as part of our special assessment letters. Whenever anybody purchases a property in the city of Stevens Point, you go through what's called a special assessment letter. All the departments that are relevant sign off on the special assessment letter. Community Development specifically identifies any non-conforming uses, any open permits, things of that nature. And so, when we've gone through this, we found that there was open permits that weren't closed. And so, unfortunately for Mason, one of the only resolutions to this is to bring the non-conforming bathroom up to conforming use, which means increasing the ceiling height in there, which is an expensive endeavor. We've talked internally. Do we close out permits? What do we do? And we're really constricted by what the state of Wisconsin allows us to do. Some of you might know, our building inspection staff, although employed by and overseen by the Community Development Department, is an extension of the state of Wisconsin. Our building code is Universal Dwelling Code. The state of Wisconsin establishes that our building inspectors are charged with enforcing that. So, one of the resolutions that we've been trying to look at is, is there a variance process that you could apply for in these specific scenarios or these specific cases? But right now, the only resolution for Mason, unfortunately, is to bring the non-conforming bathroom ceiling height to conformity.
And the variance that he spoke of. Can you speak to that a little bit?
So, there is a process. City of Madison and a few others have a Building Code Variance Committee, essentially. There's a number of architects and building professionals that are on it. That would be in a case like, if you have an unfinished upstairs and the stairs going upstairs don't meet the rise-over-run requirements within the building code, could you apply for a variance to allow that as an occupiable space? And so, those are the types of variances that this specific group would be looking at. It would be establishing another board of appeal, essentially, for these individual folks. I don't believe that our administrative appeals board would be able to administer that, and quite frankly, we would want building professionals on that board, not necessarily the general public.
Thank you very much. If any alderperson has further questions for Director Kornowski or this particular case, please contact him outside of the meeting. All righty. That exhausts our non-agenda items, and then we move on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. Don't all jump at once. Thank you, Mr. President. Motion.
I second.
And seconded by Morrow. Discussion?
Someone always wants to pull something, so that's why I'm kind of hesitant. Someone always wants to pull something, so.
We got a second ready, but thank you. All right, comments from the audience?
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Chris Jensen.
Hi.
Shore.
Hi.
Keemer.
Hi.
Zerazua.
Hi.
Burr.
Hi.
Plissant.
Hi.
Niebon.
Hi.
Shuda.
Hi.
Lang.
Hi.
Fischler.
Hi.
Morrow.
Hi.
And that is approved. Item number six is a public hearing on installation of storm sewer laterals for properties fronting Washington Avenue, Portage Street, Third Street, Meadow Street, and Smith. Director Lemke, you were here earlier. Did you want to give an update on this before I open the public hearing? He's in the overflow room. Just giving him time to walk. There you go. Look at that. That was almost like a Kramer entrance. Joel, you want to give us some background on this before I open up the public hearing?
I missed it.
Just the hearing, public hearing on storm sewer laterals for properties fronting Washington, Portage, Third, Meadow, and Smith.
Yes, so preliminary resolution. Basically, what we're doing is estimating the properties that are going to need a storm lateral. If you already have one, you won't be assessed for one. If you don't have one, you will.
All right. Stick around until the public hearing's over, please.
Okay.
I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to offer testimony, step to the lectern and provide that. Public hearing remains open. And for the third and final time, the public hearing remains open. Hearing and seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Director. And we will move on to item number seven, which is the final resolution on the installation of storm sewer laterals for properties fronting Washington Avenue, Portage Street, Third Street, Meadow Street, and Smith.
Some of approval.
Second.
Moved by Shore, seconded by Morrow. Discussion?
This is nice to get these things because semis are about 100 years old, so it's nice to have these.
And again, this won't be for everybody. You should be well aware of whether or not you're going to need that lateral. All right, comments from the audience? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Morrow.
Hi.
Fischler.
Hi.
Lang.
Hi.
Shuda.
Hi.
Niebon.
Hi.
Plissant.
Hi.
Burr.
Hi.
Zerazua.
Hi.
Keemer.
Hi.
Shore.
Hi.
Chris Jensen.
Hi.
And that is approved. Item number eight is consideration of possible design changes to the approved Alternative Business 51 Planning Study. Trevor Ork? Keith, you're on deck, just so you know.
Trevor Ork, 601 Washington. You put me first on purpose, didn't you?
I did. Zerazua put it up. Put me up to it. She had to go last on Monday.
Okay, I see how it works. All right. So, the current approved design for Business 51 is safer, cheaper, more efficient for all users, not just specific users, and will allow more people, ages from eight to 80, to use it more safely. It's really disappointing to see these alternatives still on the table, and it's really odd that we're here again. There has been, unless I missed it, there hasn't been new data. There hasn't been new design shirets or any type of public meetings, except for that October of 2022, and it just really baffles me why we're still here. I do want to bring up a couple of points that I glazed over a couple of these last week, and one specific concern that I had was funding. So, I mentioned, and I'll mention again, that there are grants coming from the bipartisan infrastructure law, and there's certain specific ones that will not fund the alternatives that have been proposed, specifically because they are not protecting the safety of vulnerable users. So, the Reconnecting Communities program is one of them. So, designing -- So, designing roadways to be slower while prioritizing people that walk, bike, or use transit, transit, excuse me, as well as the safe streets and roads for all. That one prioritizes the elimination of serious injuries and fatalities on roadway design, protecting the most vulnerable users, again, the same people I mentioned before. So, the reason I do know this is because I have spent a lot of hours diving into these notices of funding opportunity, as well as the applications themselves, and helping the county and city write these grants. According to the Business 51 Safety and Operations Report, Stevens Point Police Department reported from 2015 to 2019 that Business 51 in Stevens Point experienced 424 traffic crashes. According to the reported calculations, crashes on Business 51 between those years cost our community about $10.3 million. Now, I know that was something that was put out to the public a long time ago. I just wanted to bring it back to the table to understand. What city council did approve is going to help correct that problem. That's a lot of money going out the window, and I think we can do better. Last but not least, the current approved design is recommended by the traffic engineering firm AECOM, and the alternatives are not recommended. So, please reject these alternatives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I feel compelled to provide accurate information. As Trevor stated, his experience with those grants comes from what he's read. You heard it from Director Badun last week, that no design precludes us from grants, and I've also been in contact with our Senator's Office and our Congressman's Office, along with the Department of Transportation, who have all confirmed that. No design precludes us. However, some will give us better chances. To say that any design out there doesn't do anything to improve the safety of the most at-risk individuals is a fabrication. And then to speak that on AECOM's recommendation, I think Trevor was pretty bold. Think AECOM should be making those comments, and they have not not recommended any of the designs that are currently out in the hallway. Keith, you're up.
Keith, 301 Fourth Avenue. Thanks for letting us speak for a couple of minutes on this item. Right, these new designs just, again, have no data behind them as to their safety, as to their efficiency, all the, we really should give ourselves a little bit of credit as a community, that all the effort, time, money, patience, thoughtfulness, deliberation, conversation that led to the current city-approved designs, we should give ourselves credit that that wasn't wasted effort, that we can just kind of show up with a couple of new designs in order to appease who? Before we even consider these new designs, we should ask, why are we even seeing these new designs? Why have the approved designs not moved forward? What are we waiting for? Granted, a decision like this is not to be taken lightly. It's major, and we should also pat ourselves on the back, which everybody loves to do. I like to do it, too. We should pat ourselves on the back, that we feel unified, that we want to address this issue to begin with, that we want to try to channel a lot of money, a lot of funds towards improving the Business 51 district. And so, that's great. And so, if we are going to make this type of move, which is a huge move, we need to consider the future of the city, not just the present and some individual needs, but we need to make a move that is the most innovative move we can with the amount of money we're trying to do, trying to get, and that serves the most people in the best way possible, and that serves the greater community and the future of this community, the future of this city. Speaking here as a resident, I've got two little kids, we're on our bikes a lot, we ride around a lot, we walk around a lot. We do not walk on the Business 51 corridor at all. It's a death trap. Speaking as a business owner, my wife and I own Caravan Wine Shop downtown in the square. Making something that is more pedestrian-friendly and still traffic-friendly and efficient ultimately just brings a lot more people to the area, and walkers, bikers, people of all types of mobility, people in cars, it makes it attractive. And that's something that's often talked about here, is how do we make this city attractive that people want to come here, spend money, move here, live here, start a family here, start a business here? We make it attractive. We do things like planting trees and all that. Why don't we make our streets attractive, safe, friendly, beautiful places, thoughtful places? It can be done so easily. We have the designs already approved and ready to go. So, I also urge you to reject the current drafts that have been put out there with no information. Thank you.
Thank you. And that exhausts our speaker list. I did want to provide some input from some of the roundabout places that were mentioned last week. Unfortunately, I didn't get a whole lot of response that I consider terribly valid, reaching out to Mayor Toland in UW River, for River Falls. His office did not get back to me, but the person I spoke to said that this particular, the roundabout at UW River Falls was north of campus, not the same area. They didn't have any idea of pedestrian counts, so I don't have anything there. Carmel, Indiana, apparently that is the roundabout capital of the world, self-proclaimed, 147 roundabouts, and the mayor there told me there is one intersection in the entire city that has a four-way stop. That's it. Again, he didn't have any data that quickly to show what the pedestrian counts were. Rochester Institute of Technology, I wasn't able to get ahold of anybody that would give me a callback. And Albuquerque, New Mexico, the Fourth Street, that was done in conjunction, by a developer in conjunction with 111 luxury apartments. Brian Patterson at, I can't read my own writing. Trone? Trone Development? Trane Development. Sorry, I can't even read my own handwriting. So, that was not put in for pedestrians. It was predominantly to move traffic through that area, and that's about the best information I can give you there. The, I'm going to take some liberties here before we get into discussion, because I think it's important. I don't see anybody here who objected to the design from September of 2021. I don't know why that is, but I think it's important that, as the speaker said, this is going to be a project that is a generation or more that they're going to have to live with. Speaking to the design, yes, let's trust the design. How about the design we did back in 2010, 2011? Maybe that's the original design. The fact is, things change, things are fluid. We're not going to get professional engineers to give us a poor design, as some would imply. Your own engineer, Scott Badun, told you that grants are on the table. The engineering is sound, but that doesn't mean it's final. A different engineering company might come up with a different engineering design, much like what the county has done with their justice center, saying, oh, this is the only design that'll work, and we're going to tear down a building that we just put up and uses the annex. But just because an engineer does it, doesn't mean that's the only option. But the thing that frustrates me most about this whole discussion are the people who are entrenched in it must be this, or it must be this, or it won't work. The simple fact is, any of the designs will work. People will adapt. Whether or not they're going to be a benefit is somewhere in between there. So, that's the reason that we're looking at options, because hundreds of people stressed objections to it, and the current design that's on the table, the one that, without the alternatives, has already been modified by those same engineers in response to those concerns. So, the reason we're looking at this is to make sure that we understand all of the concerns that people have and all of the options that can be on the table. And the ones that you see outside there, the ones we talked about last week and the ones that are online, those aren't the be-all, end-all either, because this is going to be a project that's going to get constructed over 10 years. There will, I guarantee you, there will be changes to that over the course of 10 years. So, to say that it must be done now and must be done this way is wrong, and that's all we're dealing with tonight. You have another opportunity to question things. Will this work? Might that work? This can, design could do something. We don't have to take all of this section or all of that section. It could be something as simple as, does this really need to be a raised median? And we can look at those. And those decisions don't have to be done tonight. The 30% design is already approved with the original plan. If the council has any interest in looking at those options, we'd really like to hear about them tonight. Yes?
Well, I know the South Side has had its moments of very vocal people coming forward and expressing their thoughts and feelings about things, and I've been listening. I know with these three options, right, I know that the business owners did not like the four-lane option with medians. So, that is why, in my opinion, that these other two options just won't work for the South Side, because I know that Kevin Flatop, for example, did not like the idea of people being only able to access his business from one side of the road. And then the other is that when you go to Plover, there were times that I've been there, you know, on Plover Road, where they have a kind of a similar four-way setup, where I have to do a U-turn to come back. So, I do think honestly that the three-lane option does fit the South Side businesses the best in terms of that aspect. The other thing is that with my initial decision, you know, that I made on the three-lane option, I thought, you know, and I've thought about this countless times, and I thought, you know, am I, am I the one being closed-minded? Is it me, like, thinking maybe I'm not listening? You know, people keep telling me I'm not listening. Am I not listening? But the more I thought about it, the more I thought that, you know, I thought about all the feedback from the businesses, about the medians blocking access to businesses from one direction. I've thought about Ben Franklin Junior High and how, you know, there are kids who bike and walk to school every day, and what about their safety? And then buses taking the kids to school that turn off Business 51 and actually go through a four-way stop after that, and I've seen them do that flawlessly with parents driving to and from school, dropping off and picking up children as well. I thought about the residents who live in the general vicinity of the South Side. You know, they use Business 51 to get to and from work, to use it to run errands, visit friends and family. I thought about major events being held in the city and how three lanes would handle increased traffic flow. I asked a lot of questions about that. I asked if increased traffic would cause considerable delays, and I was told that it would not. I thought about our fire departments and police departments. Can three lanes handle emergencies? And I was told that they could. Would less lanes mean less fire safety or police safety? And I was assured that it would not. I thought about bikers and walkers and kids who bike and walk to school, and then also kids who might go to QuickTrip or the Dollar General. I thought about people who don't bike and walk the corridor because they don't feel safe to do so. I also thought about the future. I thought, will more people be living and working in Stevens Point in the future? In 20 years, will this roadway be safe or safer or less safe for people? In 50 years, when we have to resurface, will it be more expensive or less expensive based on the final decision that we make? I thought about the cost to taxpayers, and if we lose a million-dollar grant, who's going to be paying the difference for that? And also, if we expand the roadway, who's going to be paying for the difference for that as well? And then lastly, I also thought about our city staff involved and how they want the very best for our community, and I don't think that they would support any plans or ideas that would negatively impact Stevens Point as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Christensen.
This has been an issue for 22 months. I know the exact date because that same meeting, when this was approved, was the same meeting that I ended up getting appointed to city council, so I know it was almost exactly 22 months ago. So, my time in city council has been very intertwined with the comings and goings of this issue. Change, modifications to plans are a normal part of the process, and even, no matter what we decide tonight, there's still going to be some changes made. You take a look, and that's a normal part of the planning process. What we're going to be deciding on tonight is moving ahead with that 30% design. This isn't going to be a one- or two-year project. This is going to be somewhere between probably seven and 10 years. We're looking at the first segment that we'll be addressing. It's probably going to be the North segment, just because of the TIF funding. So, those decisions will be, need to, will need to be made fairly quickly and to give them some guidance as far as how to move forward. I think they do want to have a general idea of what direction the council wants to go. That being said, I think it's, I'm glad we're having a chance to readdress this tonight, only as far as five out of our 11 members didn't vote on this before, including myself. That being said, I was in the audience. I did speak that evening, and my viewpoint hasn't changed much. During that meeting, I stated that I liked the general idea of the, of the three-lane project that was proposed. I thought access to various properties needed to be taken a look at and potentially addressed, and some of that's already taken place. There's been numerous meetings that have taken place since that time, and changes have been made. And that process is still going to be ongoing, no matter what we decide tonight. I think the one key decision that we'll be taking a look at and need to make a decision on will be the roundabout at Fourth. And I will honestly say, I've kind of flip-flopped like a crappie on ice. I mean, I look and I can see pros and cons both ways. I like the idea of a roundabout there, but I also have to make sure that it's safe. Pedestrian safety, and it is a unique set of circumstances there. I know we have tried to get information from other communities, hasn't been very forthcoming to this point in time, but I think that's going to be really helpful, because this is a decision that's going to have an impact for the next 30, 40-plus years. And the university is a key part of our community, and we ought to make sure that whatever's done at Fourth is going to make it better and safer for our students, our university students, and as well as other walkers in that area. That segment of the city has probably got the greatest foot traffic in this entire city, so we have to make sure that that North corridor is as pedestrian-friendly as we can. I live 120 feet away from Business 51, so I, I get to see the amount of traffic that goes there. I get to see the amount of pedestrians that don't walk up and down Business 51, including myself. It's, when you have a sidewalk right next to a busy thoroughfare and people aren't going the speed limit, they're going faster than that, and you have no separation between you and that roadway, it's incredibly disconcerting. So, I do think some changes do need to be made to that. I think the decision at Fourth, the one plus that we do have is when you take a look at the plans and the designs, both of them, whether we do a signalized intersection or whether we do a roundabout, takes just about the same exact amount of property. So, we could be moving forward with a lot of the planning, and that's that North segment that needs to be done first. We could move ahead and start that and still be getting more input and make sure that the decision that we make at, for that intersection is the best one. If a roundabout can be proven to be safe, I still If a roundabout can be proven to be safe, I still will be leaning that way, but if not, then maybe it does become signalized. But the fortunate part, because they take the same amount of real estate, we don't necessarily have to make that decision tonight either.
Thank you. Alder Shore.
Thank you, Mayor. I would add about three months to the front end of that timeline, I think. And then add that, for those of us who've been here for the discussion, it's been really rough. You know, about a year of discussion that reached a pretty high pitch, and not always a very civil one. Yeah, it's in three segments, as we know. You know, I feel for the people who live in the middle segment, because with respect to the timeline, even though it's the least controversial, and in terms of residences is going to have the biggest impact, for, for good reasons, it's going to go last on the timeline. And so they're, they're stuck having to wait. To also be consistent with what I've said multiple times before, my main concern about the southern portion has always been cost. And if it's a matter of risk and uncertainty, you know, rather than definitely being disqualified with the stakes the way they are, and Alder Fischler mentioned this, there's financial consequences if, you know, we take that gamble and we're rejected. You know, I think part of that picture is trends. You know, a traffic engineer I know who lives in the community and...
No.
I know, no, no. This is a different traffic engineer, not the one who grew up in this community, that someone who lives in this community. And, and we talked about Plover, because Plover is very, to put it politely, constructed. It's paved, you know, half a mile wide. And, you know, these uncertainties, but they're guesses we have to make, and this person said, "That wouldn't have gone through today." And that does kind of square with trends. Also, to be clear, for all the times that it's been said, bicycle infrastructure, adding, you know, an accommodation for bicycles, for me anyway, has never been important at all, for one very obvious reason, which is, in the TAP grant, that infrastructure was put one block to the west on Water Street, going basically, you know, covering commuters for that structure, parallel to Church Street. I mean, is there a compromise? I don't know. I've, I've heard that maybe the very southern end revised that, because that would add marginally the least cost from HH to, I suppose that would either be Nable or Michigan. Okay? You know, fine, maybe. It doesn't go, you know, a lot, I mean, a lot of that is by Lake McDill. I've also said many times, I care more about North Division, because we're very actively in the process of remaking North Division to be very much more walkable. And, you know, the sort of the strip mall pattern at the southern end is very well-established. I mean, having said that, just to add a quick point, if we are looking to the future and knowing, you know, what we've seen in North Division and around the, you know, everywhere, right, that strip malls have, you know, not always done so well, that we've seen difficulties, you know, businesses struggling, but they aren't right now, I don't know. But I do know that, so back to the North End, which is coming soon, and which we are trying to make less car dominant. Hold open the question of the roundabout? Okay, I guess. And I would just echo what my colleague, President Christensen just said, which is, that is a place where people, you know, people on foot, where there's a strong logic to have that foot traffic, you know, accommodated. Again, that's that contrast between North and South. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of me? Alder Sarazawa. I was waiting for Ginger.
Well, we're going in order, but I'm happy with skipping around.
Okay, fair enough.
I just want to say, like, so what the mayor said, quote, "Any design will work, people will adapt." And I agree. I think that we can't keep reviewing designs forever, though. We have to make a decision, and I think that's what we did as council. I think we were, again, looking at these options, like, the idea that, you know, what's lowest cost versus what's the safest in, in the situation, the design that we approved, we don't have to sacrifice one for the other. It's the cheapest and it's the safest option. So I feel like that's a really easy decision still, even though it's a really complicated situation. I think the idea that things are going to continue to change, yeah, like, with studies and technology, things are always changing. There might be a point where we have a road over the road, who knows, whatever, you know, like, there's always going to be other options, but we are at a situation where we have to fix this road. So we can't just wait for a better option and a better option. We have to move forward. And I think that we had gotten to that point until this was, you know, stalled. So I hope that we're able to move forward with what we already have identified for us by AECOM as the lowest cost and the safest option.
Thank you. Alder Person Burr.
Yeah. Pretty much agree with what everybody else is saying. Oh, I live right on Division Street, so, yeah, my main concern is just kind of slowing traffic down. It's scary to be in my front yard sometimes. But yeah, I think the, I got up and spoke to at the September meeting in 2021 about the, the council-approved option or whatever that went through. I think that kind of, that is our best bet, and like Alder Sarazawa said, like, I think we just need to take action on something. We can't keep kicking the can down the road, I guess, trying to figure out what the best possible option is for everybody, because everybody has different ideas and different needs, I guess, out of the corridor.
Thank you. Allison, you want to go?
Sure.
I don't want to pressure anybody, but it's...
Question and a couple of comments. Whatever we come up with as a decision, if we decide to go forward tonight, does that have to be voted on then?
No.
Okay.
So the 30% design on the original design has already been approved by council?
Okay.
Before you.
Yeah.
Any changes or alternatives that you want to consider? The Alder Person Christensen brought up the four lanes to Michigan. Was that what it was? As a possibility? It could go to Michigan, it could go to Nable, it could go to Heffron, it could go to Rice, it could go to Patch. That could be an option. Any options that this council wants to consider should be talked about and at least conveyed tonight. But there is no need for any action if the council chooses to just go forward with the 30% design. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It's temperature-taking, basically?
Uh, no, it's an opportunity to consider...
The discussion tonight is...
No. No, it's, it's an opportunity to take into any, any of those options. For example, 20 feet earlier, the lane change starts and Flatoff's driveways are not blocked. 20 feet. Is that something you want to consider? The roundabout is probably the biggest one. Or a four-lane undivided, or not undivided, a four-lane divided could possibly be an option. If any of the changes that we've talked about over the last year, or anything that's AECOM has designed outside, those, the two alternatives, can be pushed forward tonight as well, right? But the 30% design, if your wish is to go ahead with the original design, as is, you know, no action needs to be taken. That has already been approved. Any changes to that 30% design that the council wishes to explore should take some action tonight. Does that make sense?
Action rather than just raising.
It depends on what it is. Like, if, I'll give you an example. If we determine that, nope, we don't want to pursue the roundabout at all, or we want to make the center section six lanes, that should be taking action.
10 lanes.
Whatever.
Why stop at 10?
If it's minor changes, like, let's hold off and see, get some more evidence on the roundabout. Let's consider Michigan Avenue, Nable Street, or Rice, or Heffron as a potential four-lane divided. That should be explored, because we don't need full action on the southern section, because that's seconded priority. Does that make sense? We just want to know if there's any options that you want to explore, right? And I don't necessarily know we need official action on any of them, but it would be helpful if that's what the body is choosing, rather than just Alder Person Shore or Alder Person Neebo, right? Does that make sense? So action on something like that will tell us whether it's really a majority of the council that wants to do whatever that option is. Does that make sense?
Okay. Okay.
All righty.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. On the North Side, well, first off, in general, it, these two extra plans that have came back, it seems like they punished the South Side Business District by putting the median there as compared to what was there before, and really basically not listening to anything that anybody has to say from the South Side. That's just my thought on it. But back to the North Side, two things. First off, the two-lane raised median, I've heard things about tendencies and things that have changes all the time and stuff. Well, in the last three to five years, there's been a change as far as food service goes. Food delivery with DoorDash and places like that, there's four restaurants on that block that will have a median in the middle that probably get between 20 and 50 deliveries from them a day. So you're going to be having a lot of U-turners just as far as handling that issue. My main, though, concern really is the roundabout. I look at the safety factor of that, and I think we really have a good example of what is going on and what could possibly be there. One block south of that, at the fire station, we have to have a flashing yellow light because we can't get the students across safely with four lanes of traffic there. The same amount of traffic, if you're going to push it through one lane of a roundabout going around, is going to make it even a lot tougher for the students and everybody else there. If we didn't need that flashing yellow down there, it wouldn't be there, because it's basically something the city's, you know, having to pay for and stuff. But it was put there because the kids just didn't, weren't being able to get across safely. And I think that's going to be pushed to the northern part now, at the roundabout. That's all I have to say, I think.
Thank you very much. Anyone on this side?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alder Person Neebo.
My way or the highway, is that what you were suggesting? We don't know what the future will bring, especially as the implications of climate change start to make themselves pretty obvious. I think, didn't we just have the seven hottest days in the history of recorded weather? We might be all driving little tiny three-wheel electric cars in 10 years, or a Jetson, you know, flying car. I'm voting for that one. As an elected representative, not only of my district, which really is kind of isolated from Division Street, other than we use it...
You're way out there.
We're way out there in the boonies. I think I have a responsibility of care for everyone in the community, and I think we all have that responsibility. We need to look at what's the safest, most cost-effective, most responsible to the taxpayer dollars, especially now as we're looking at our budgets. We all know the budget constraints we've been looking at before the state finally shook loose a little bit of money. We don't, we can't guarantee a grant, but grants that, projects that embrace the most users in the corridor seem to be the ones that the Federal Department of Transportation is pushing for what they would like to see in these big road projects. I'm in favor of the four to three. I'd like to see a single-lane slow-speed roundabout at fourth, if it's proven safe. I'm, like Alder Christensen, I would like to be convinced it's the safest option, because I think it'll keep traffic moving the best. If drivers would follow the law and stop for a pedestrian in a crosswalk, we might not need a flashing beacon on these streets. You know, I hear all kinds of stuff about bikes doing rolling stops through, via a red stop signs, but I see an awful lot of people pass me as I stop to let a college kid walk across Main Street. So the road design going from a four to three is going to change all of that. It's going to slow traffic, it'll help save fuel if you drive a slower speed, you don't burn as much gas, you don't contribute as much carbon to the atmosphere. A lot of good ramifications could come from a four to three. And y'all know how I feel about urban planning, how important it is, and I will continue to support the four to three. I would be open to looking at the South Side, but man, it's so much easier to get in and out of businesses on a four to three than a four-lainer. So I'm with about everything that Alder Fischler said and Alder Christensen said. So that's, that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
The roundabout is designed to keep traffic moving. Pedestrians walking across it stops the traffic. I can't imagine getting halfway through a roundabout where I think I'm going to be moving, and then all of a sudden, people stop. Roundabouts, you are on a swivel. I just don't see it. So I'd need more evidence on that. The South Side, I haven't gotten an answer from the appropriate person, I guess, the four-lane raised median in the second one. Can it be a four-raised, four-lane with a twiddle in between, you know, where you can make a left turn heading north, or the opposite? So I'd like to see that raised, question raised, anyway. And then, in regards to us passing, we're looking at the North Side passing?
All of it.
We're looking at all of it?
Right now, the entire length of the road, south, north, and center, have already been approved to go to a 30% design with that original design.
Right.
So that's the action that's already been taken.
And how does the referendum that is right now, like, if we pass this, does it go to?
At this point, no, not until we're anticipated to spend more than $1 million.
Right. Which would be soon as we open the project.
No, because we've already contracted with AECOM prior to the referendum to go to that 30% design. Anything after that may need to go to referendum.
If it's still in effect.
If it's still in effect, or if it's more than $1 million. I, I don't know what the price is going to be to go to a 50% design or a 70% design. It's possible that in those phases, it would be under $1 million, but that's the design. That has nothing to do with construction.
Okay.
Mr. Wang.
Just, just curious. So if we decide to make some changes, does this go back to referendum for the city to, like, or just, is it piece by piece goes?
No, none of it actually is required to go to referendum unless we spend more than $1 million. I forget the exact wording, but none of this would have to go to referendum. None of these design alternatives would need to go to referendum until we started spending an anticipated... an anticipated $1 million.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. I'm just hesitant to get back into the, let's say, division in the community over this, seeing as we've already come to some sort of decision. Yes, we'll have plenty of opportunity to revisit it over 10 years, but taking action now seems to be, from what I'm hearing, what we need to do to get the funding, and we're only going to be doing the north end of it, so we can continue talking about the center and the south end for who knows how long. So, I, just hearing from tonight, I'd take no action, is what it sounds like to me, would be the reasonable way to go about it, seeing as it is the cheapest, it has been demonstrated to be the safest of the proposals, and I really don't want to spend more time, as council, rehashing this thing.
Okay, great. Alder tomorrow?
Ald, Alder Fischler doesn't have anything else?
She spoke first. We're going through everybody once around. Don't feel you have to. Again, I don't want to pressure anybody, I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak.
I think, I think everything that's, that's been said has already, has already been said. I'm for the original thing. I do have a, about the, about the roundabout at fourth, I think you have a very good point. That's already been said. And I know that the mayor's talked to the south side businesses a lot, and I know, I have no doubt, just like when we had the Hoover Street overpass, we had change orders and so on, all the way up to the very end. So, there'll be other things to, we have, we're going to have a lot of other things that are going to probably come up that we don't even think about now.
Okay.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, I'll go last. And I'll try to be short. So, I've been involved with this discussion since, I think, at least two years prior to my time on council, because I was on one of the stakeholder groups that met as, with the engineers and with the city staff to discuss communities' feelings about this project. So, yeah, it's been a long haul, and I just think there's a lot of fatigue with this. People want to move forward. I was happy to see that the central segment remained the same with the two alternatives. Like Director Karnowski and Alder Christian mentioned, I have a vested interest in the north segment staying as is, given the targeted master plan for Division, how close it is to campus, you know, how much just pedestrian movement there is up there. I was prepared to make some concessions and compromises with the south district. That said, given these two alternatives are presented, I'm not sure those really are preferable to them. I, you know, didn't hear from those community members or residents. I was kind of prepared, prepared to follow Alder Fischler's lead on that, based on, you know, maybe that she had more direct contact with them. I did hear from one resident shortly after this came up last week, and that is a property owner in District Three whose business is going to be relocated no matter what. All three of these alternatives, his property is getting moved, and he just wants to move on. He just wants it done. So, that said, I'm, again, I was ready to make some concessions with the south, but really, I think this does serve everyone's needs the best in terms of safety and cost and all, all users. I do lean towards the roundabout on Fourth Avenue, but I'm prepared to make compromises with that, too. It is adjacent to campus. I'd be interested to see what university staff, you know, and their engineering department have to say about that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have one other thing.
I wanted to say, real quick, Appleton, the city of Appleton, just about three or four days ago, approved a four-to-three road diet on College Avenue, somewhere down toward their middle. So, if anybody'd be interested, I'm sure the Alders would talk to us if we called and said, "Why did you do that?" Anyway, thank you for the indulgence.
Makes sense. Yes.
I just wanted to note, too, that with all of these options, and the four-lane raised median, that there would be, especially with the potential alternative two, which has the four-lane raised median to the two-lane, two-way left turn lanes, there would be two additional properties that would need to be purchased for that one, that option, and they would be businesses. So, already, that is anti-business, so I just wanted to throw that out there, too.
Great. Okay. So, is there anyone who feels the need to make a motion?
I do.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a motion to move ahead with the existing approved alternative, but with the provision that additional input be sought to consent, to take a look at the impacts of a roundabout on fourth.
Okay, and that's certainly within your purview to do. I would ask that, since the original design has already been approved, that's redundant. If you would like to look further into the roundabout...
Sure. I would make a motion then, just to keep getting some additional information on the roundabout on fourth.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Plissance. Now, only discussion on that motion. We don't have to worry about 434s, or south side, or center section, or anything like that. Any concerns about further exploring the roundabout at fourth?
I feel it'd be beneficial to us, new to the council, to have that data. If there's anything new that's been developed since they looked at it last time, I'd be interested in seeing the safety studies of the differences between the two proposals.
Okay.
Are we coming up on a time crunch here? This is the last time that we talked. We're getting close to a point where we're going to have to, like, make some hard and fast decisions so that we're able to get grant money and so on.
So, yes, so the north section is predominantly going to be TIF, which is still taxpayer money. Grants are taxpayer money. All of it's taxpayer money. We don't get, like, free money from somewhere. Everybody pays, it's a different pocket out of your same pair of pants. In talking with Director Badun, well, that's really how it lives, right? You say, "Oh, it's a grant, it's free." No, it's not free, I paid that. But in talking with Director Badun, he said if that we, if we wanted to take some time to reevaluate the, the intersection at fourth and Division, that would not impede the design as long as we didn't wait two years to look at it. Let's, let's figure something out in the next couple of months.
Because it needs the same amount of land for either option. So, they'll still be able to move ahead on the 30% design, it's not going to impede that. We do need to make a decision, I had the same discussion with him, if he thought it would be problematic, and he said, "No," because they basically require the same amount of...
I think he's in lower form, I want to hear it from the engineer's mouth. I know how we trust all the engineers. Director, you want to come in here?
I trust Alder Christensen, so.
That's a, that might be a mistake.
We're good.
I second that.
I trust that Alder Chris, Christensen did talk to Director, did talk to the director.
Yeah.
So, if he's not here...
Maybe he's not.
He's here.
I'm sure he is.
Not that late.
I don't know, I thought maybe...
It sounds like we're good.
Maybe there's a baseball game today. Director Badun. Pagey Director.
There he is.
From the mouth, from the mouth of the, of the engineer, if they wanted to look at the options of roundabout or signalized intersection at fourth, take another couple of months to do that, would that impede the design from AECOM?
No, it wouldn't. Really, we just need that particular part, if we're looking at kind of points along the way, and individual things, it's in part, well, yet bigger and more substantial than that, you know, it's in part just like what we'll do with some of the access we go through, you know, is the driver going to be here, there, whatever, you know. Those are kind of some of the more detailed parts of the design that can be handled as we go through. Really, when we get to the end of the 30% design is when we have to have direction. At that point in time, I need to be told, signal, intersection, when we move to final design, we have to have that answer. So, as long as we're not talking about what a corridor is going to look like, that's a big deal. But an intersection, yes, that, that we can do concurrently, make a decision at a wedding date.
Thank you, Director. Mr. Christensen, we've been vindicated.
There you go.
Alder Zerazua?
I'm just wondering, and maybe the director could answer this, like, who is the most qualified to find out some comparables regarding roundabouts in a university town? Because calling four places is not enough. Like, who, who can actually do that research and give us that information? Who should?
Who should? Really, I would think, you know, someone, you know, transportation engineer who can ask, to look at the data, you know, compare to that, make sure they're asking the right questions, get that, talking to the right people that are getting, be able to give them the data they actually need. I mean, I'd be thinking, it'd be a Jeff Sandberg from AECOM type PTOE, who can always do that, who can reach out to the, the right people on the other end to make sure they have the data and that it is comparable, and it is being, you know, if they're presenting data, that it's also, they can question the data to make sure that it is indeed accurate to that, and collected in a manner that's representative of the industry and also. Should be someone like that.
I agree. And if you remember Alder Zerazua, when we had that meeting at SPAS, I asked AECOM if they had any examples, and there weren't any. It's, it's a pretty high-traffic count for pedestrians.
He said he wasn't any, aware of any at that time.
Right. There might be some now.
There might be some, so, yeah.
We could ask AECOM to do that. That's who should be doing it.
Yes.
I agree. All right, anything else? The motion before you is to consider more options or more research?
To, to get more information.
Get more information for the intersection at fourth and Division. Okay? If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissance?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is proof. That number nine is a resolution, a request from Emily Jeong, representing Norman Barber Revocable Trust, for a conditional use permit to operate a one-unit residence on the property located at 2400 Church Street with the parcel identified in your packet, consistent with Chapter 23.02, Sub 2, Sub A, Sub 3, Sub D.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Keimer. Discussion?
Thank you for waiting so long.
Yes.
Patience.
Hearing none. Comments from the audience? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Plissance?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's proof. Then, number 10 is a resolution, a request from Kelsey Hayes, representing Ross Dress for Less, for a signed variance to install one wall sign exceeding the maximum size restrictions on a property located at 5601 US Highway 10 East, consistent with the Chapter 25, Sub 14. We did have Katie, who wishes to speak on that item. Katie, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you allowing me to speak on this. As you know, as you may know, this property is set over 750 feet off from the main highway, creating a hardship for the municipality, or for this business, as the eligibility of their letters would be so small if we were to comply to the 100-square-foot code. We also have neighboring tenants whose square footage exceeds what code currently allows, and so we are requesting this allowance for a variance to the signage. I also have Kent Richardson and Fabiola Lozoya here, and they're representatives from Ross, and they may have a few items that they wish to speak on as well, and to help argue our point.
Any of those people wishing to speak?
Hi, this is Fabiola Lozoya with Ross.
Okay, Fabiola, you can go first.
Hi there. So, I'm part of the door, store design team, and I am working on, on this location with the team, and I just wanted to say that we're really excited to come to Stevens Point Community. This will be our 27th location in Wisconsin. We currently have 26. We are also opening a location in Marshfield, not too far from here, so we're very excited. Our, what we're proposing here is our, our standard for our brand, which is a 7242, and you'll see the elevation here shortly, but we just wanted to come in and bring, you know, our, our standards and, and represent what we typically do across the United States. And so, just wanted to, you know, partake on tonight's hearing and let you know that we are very excited to be here and would like to work with you on, on what could be, or what would be acceptable.
Thank you. Kelsey, did you have comments?
Hi, this is Kelsey with Creative Sign Company. So, with this property, we just wanted to, I mean, I'm going to kind of reiterate what Katie was saying, that there are other properties in the vicinity that also do not stick to that 100, and we understand that those were most likely grandfathered in. However, we do want everyone to understand that this property is setback, very far off of US 10, and so, a lot of the driving traffic doesn't have the chance to read that signage, being at such a far distance, as far as that 100-square-footage allows. So, increasing that size will just allow people the opportunity to read it, see it, at least, and a quick opportunity driving down the street or down that highway in order to pull in. You know, one of the questions that always seems to come up at some of these meetings is to make sure that it's not going to, you know, take away from the other aesthetics of, of the vicinity, and the entire property development is, you know, really aiding in this aesthetics. And so, again, that purpose of the sign is really to attract customers and, you know, bring them in to spend their time and money in the, not only this business, but also the surrounding businesses in the area. So, you know, as far as that goes, we're following all the other regulations, we just need something a little bit bigger, just because that 100 square feet just really isn't enough. You can see from the rendering that, that big facade on the front of the building, you know, the signage isn't overshadowing that facade, it's really just utilizing the space that's provided on the front of that building. So, it really fits in nicely with the entire aesthetic of the building.
All right, thank you. Director, when we talked about this before, we had talked about finding an option, instead of granting a variance, to actually look at our current sign ordinance, to see if there were any options in regards to distance and perspective. What updates can you give us?
Not a lot on that front. What I can tell you is that the Plan Commission did not provide any recommendation, almost a technicality where they voted, the motion was to approve, that was voted down, there was no motion to, to send back to staff. So, technically, it comes to this body without a recommendation. In fact, staff's recommendation is to send back to Plan Commission so we can have further discussion with the applicant. I, I think there is some common solution that we can probably find here. It will likely require some type of variance, but I, I think there's a, some compromise in the middle that will appease both the applicant and city zoning staff.
Let me ask you one more time, Director. What is staff's recommendation?
The current recommendation is denial on the paper. However, we are also open to sending this back to Plan Commission so staff can continue to work with the applicant.
Okay, which one would you prefer?
Send it back to Plan Commission.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Ma'am.
Alder Fischler.
Why?
I know, the long hair probably threw you off. I just had a quick question about how quickly you needed the sign approval, because I think, is a month going to delay things that much? Or, I guess, is that something that we can, you know, if we have to delay it a month, is that, is still working within your schedule of opening your store?
Kelsey, I'd throw that back to you, since you are the applicant. If you want someone else to answer, that's completely acceptable as well.
I do know that that will delay, just based on, like, our, you know, lead times as far as production and fabrication standpoint. We do require a lot of time in order to produce and install these signs. Our lead times are very far out, so yes, I will also throw that at Katie, because she has more of a direct line as far as that, what that lead time actually looks like.
Katie?
Yes, Kelsey is correct. Ideally, we'll, we would be starting production no later than today, in order to meet their deadline for their opening on October 6.
Okay.
So, it will, it will impact the timeline.
Thank you. Let me ask you one other thing, either Kelsey or Katie. If this is denied, what's the next step for you?
So, we have a couple backup options to present to staffing. Worst-case scenario, we have, we have an option for, that where Ross would only meet the 100-square-foot allowance, and the Dress for Less would maybe be added later on. That is not ideal, as the tagline does present a huge, it, it really symbolizes their, their marketing. And so, to remove that tagline really impacts their branding and is very off-brand for And so to remove that tagline really impacts their branding and is very off-brand for them. So it's the least ideal solution, but we, you know, at least we can get the site somewhat branded.
Let me ask one more question, then. Would you prefer that this go back to staff for further consideration rather than denial?
Yes.
Okay. I think that helps a lot. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for the Director. If this were denied, in order to help to meet an opening, could they put up a great, big, large, temporary sign on the facade that would be big enough to see? And then, that would give them time then to craft the other one, should the variance be approved?
Yes.
So that would be an option, like a big canvas sign?
Like a banner?
Yeah, like a big banner. Well, at least give them something early on if we have to send this back for a month.
Okay. Comments? President Christensen?
Is it a possibility to authorize staff if they're able to come up with a solution that's amenable to staff, that authorize them to move ahead? Can we give them that authorization?
Barring any objection from the city attorney, I would say yes.
So just, real quick, I'm not the city attorney.
Right. We knew that.
I will tell you, in Chapter 25 or sign code, it does require a recommendation from Plan Commission. So we would regardless have to go through Plan Commission to counsel.
Yeah, and Plan Commission has not approved it.
Again, I'm not the attorney. I don't have a three-year degree.
So even if we approve it, it still has to go to Planning Commission?
If you vote to send it back to Plan Commission, yes.
What if you vote?
If you vote to approve it tonight, it came to you without any recommendation. So if you vote to approve it tonight, the variance is granted. We issue the sign permit tomorrow.
You just told us it had to get a recommendation.
I'm sorry. If you kick it back to Plan Commission for a smaller sign, as an example, it would have to go back to Plan Commission before it came back to this body.
But what if we don't kick it back to Planning Commission? What if we authorize it, if it's a solution amenable to the?
Yeah, I just, I worry that.
I believe what I said is correct the first time. If you authorize staff, you are giving staff the authority to make the approval that this body would normally do.
That's what I'm thinking. We're giving, we're delegating our authority to staff. Do you feel comfortable with that or not?
No. No. The preference, and if you read Chapter 25, it says, "A recommendation from Plan Commission to the common council. You have the ultimate authority on sign variances."
And this comes without a recommendation right now.
City Attorney, are you in the overflow room, please? I know we put you on the spot every single time. But if the council is the ultimate authority and they grant that authority to you, then you don't need a Plan Commission.
I don't like that kind of approval.
Great power comes great responsibility.
That's right.
Alder Kernowski.
Logan, were you following the discussion? All right. Advice, please.
So I, if, let me just see if I'm characterizing the question right. So it's, what happens if there's a vote to approve this right now?
No.
No.
What the council is asking is, if they grant authority to staff, i.e. Director Kernowski, to come up with a solution, is that satisfying the Director's concern that Plan Commission must provide a recommendation?
I think if somebody were to literally, like, verbatim, like, make a motion to grant Ryan the authority to come up with a solution, I think that's too vague to actually confer any sort of authority whatsoever.
What if we gave it a conditional approval contingent on an acceptable solution to the staff?
I don't see that that's any different.
Then it has a conditional approval.
Well, I mean, like, if I were the applicant, I'm not so sure I'd be, like, real thrilled about an action that now places absolute unilateral authority in one person to decide on this either, especially when the standards are codified in an ordinance that, you know, is propagated pursuant to a resolution. So anyone else?
Good. Alder Fischler.
I was just going to say, it's obvious that Director Kernowski does not look comfortable with this, and I don't think that it's a very good idea. The other thing is that I understand that there's a lot, you know, a lot riding on this opening, that we need to get the signs right. But I also think it's also important to know that, you know, these laws and variance, you know, making a variance to something that's already set opens up a can of worms. And I think that's another reason it really needs to go to Plan Commission, but maybe there's some sort of alternate thing that can be done.
I'm raising my own hand. Let me do this. Let me throw this suggestion out there, because I know the sign people are the experts, and we should trust the sign people, because they know what they're doing. But why don't we consider a special counsel at the Plan Commission or after the Plan Commission, send it back, and the Plan Commission then can give you your recommendation, and counsel can act on it immediately? Is everyone, are at least six of you, I'm sorry, eight, are at least eight of you available? On what day is that, Director? August 7th, I believe.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make myself available.
You're not. Who's not available?
I gotta get my calendar. Sorry.
You're available?
Yes. But I had another comment.
So we only got two, so we're good. We're tentatively okay?
I will be here.
You will be here. Okay. All right, because we could lose three and still have our eight. So that seems like a viable option. Director Kernowski, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I, you know, it really comes down to.
We're talking two weeks now.
The role of city staff is to implement the policies you folks establish. My staff is uncomfortable, making unilateral decisions on your behalf in this specific scenario, especially when it comes to assigned variances. So I think that's acceptable, and we can definitely work with Kelsey and others to come up with a reasonable solution between the two.
Kelsey and Katie, is that an acceptable solution for you? Two weeks. Hish.
We can make that work.
Okay. Look at us making progress. Alder Keimer.
I will make a motion to send this back to Plan Commission, contingent on a council meeting following immediately after. And again, I just want to say, part of my reason for wanting to do this is, it's possible, and I could be wrong, that there's other businesses whose signs have already been approved, who followed that code, whose signs, you know, who might have wanted their signs bigger as well. So just in fairness to the rest of the commercial units in that building, yeah, I see the hardship, and I really hope that a better compromise can be reached, but that's my motion.
Seconded by Zerazua. Discussion? Let's go to Niebon and then Plissant.
Part of the reason that Plan Commission denied the variance in the first place is because we feel that the sign ordinance needs some revision, and we didn't want to approve something with a whole bunch of other businesses then saying, well, I want this, or I want that, or I want this big gigunda flashing neon whatever. We didn't want to set up, we were afraid to set a precedent. At the same time, we realized the hardship that they're under, and I safely took a video on Friday, driving from Badger West into Point from the backseat of a car. And about the only time you can really clearly see that is when you go by the old Applebee's that's now gone. If another building goes up there, it's going to, it's going to block that, and then there's a clump of trees in there, and it's hard to see traveling at speed, even though it's a pretty wide-open space. They will have a name on the big marquee, but I'm inclined to let them go bigger, even though I voted to deny, mostly because we wanted to have this discussion at this level. So.
Thank you.
Can I clap?
Alder Plissant? No, apparently you can't.
I'll explain.
Just a quick question. With, after listening to the discussion last week, and nothing being solved, and the discussion tonight, is two weeks going to be a good enough time to get an answer that we meet and for a final decision?
That's the direction of the council, make it so.
He's closer to three. Any other comments?
I was there at that meeting, too, and it was pretty clear that revision is where we need to go with this. We need to revisit this. This is going to be a problem in other places, and I look forward to seeing what sort of solutions are brought forward.
Excellent. All right. If you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. I am so proud. Look at us, making alternative solutions to something that's been pre-approved. All right. Item number 11 is the Community Development's annual report that was included in your packet. Director, any highlights that you want to touch on?
For the sake of brevity, no.
Any comments? That report is available online, StevensPoint.com. I would accept the motion then to accept that report and place it on file. Alder Fischler, seconded by Niebon. Discussion?
Good, kudos to the staff.
Yes. Outstanding.
Comments from the audience? We could probably do a voice vote on this, right?
Yes.
Voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. It passes. Item number 12 is approval of the updated resolution designating the public depository and authorizing withdrawal of city monies. Okay, Alder Shore. And Alder Christensen. Shore, Christensen. Discussion there?
We talked about this.
We certainly did.
Mm-hmm.
We never talk about anything just once.
That's right.
All right. If you are in favor, vote yes. Supposed, no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And those are approved. Item 13 and 14, come with us, come with a recommendation from the committees. Item 13 is a disallowance of a claim, Mitchell Martin injury due to a fall from a swing.
I moved in all of that claim.
By Shore.
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Did they fall from the swing, or did the swing break?
It's my understanding that the swing broke.
Oh, okay.
All right.
And then they fell.
And has we fixed the swing, then?
We did. We actually had it fixed before this happened as well.
And it still broke? Okay.
The world is an imperfect place, Bender. Screws fall out, fall out all the time. No, it's an unfortunate accident. We do make sure that our equipment is safe, and if we are aware of something, we fix it immediately. But unfortunately, things happen, and this is one of those. So this allows the claimant to go to their own insurance company, of course, to file for any claims for medical. Any further discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor of the denial, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the denial, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Fischler.